I'd like to call the zoning commission regular meeting to order on Thursday, June 1st, 2023 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Can I get a roll, please?
Fisher.
Here.
Crew here. Marzullo.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Engelmann here. In the audience are alternate Spellman and Achado, trustees Augustine, Asher and Sweattick, and zoning inspector Wilson.
Thank you. Our first order of business is the review of the zoning commission regular meeting minutes from May 4th, 2023. Does anyone have any suggestions or requested edits?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second. Moved by Crew, second by Engelmann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. The first item of business is our continuation of our discussion regarding some items for term consistency. The first one that we spoke about last meeting was, well, two meetings ago now, was floor area versus living space versus living area. I've took what we worked on during our March meeting. I provided each of you with a copy of working version of the text amendments. And most of it is consistent with what we discussed. The only issue that I had when I, when I actually worked through and put it to paper is the definition of floor area. So if I'll, I'll share my screen and I'll briefly show these definitions and feel free to stop me if you want to have a more robust discussion on it. So at our last meeting, what was the April, the April meeting, excuse me, we spoke about using floor area for businesses and then living area, living space for residential. And the challenge with that is that in the non-conforming section, they use floor area and it's a little bit different than how we would use it within the residential district. So as a result of that, I broke floor area into two different topics. One is called gross floor area. You actually saw that already in our code. It was just abbreviated. But the way that I've defined that is total area of the building calculated on a floor by floor basis enclosed by the outer building, by the outer buildings' outer walls. This includes basements, porches, garages, breezeways, or terraces. And this is again really focused on non-conforming, the non-conforming section of our code and related to how we calculate things for purposes of a non-conforming building. Go ahead.
Just cleaning up a little bit, perhaps we should take out the word outer before building.
That one?
Yes.
Perfect. And then moving on again in the definition section, we now have a floor area public, which is very consistent, I think, with what the code had already defined as the public floor area, which is the floor area that is accessible to the public after the space occupied by the walls is deducted from the gross floor area. And that pertains predominantly to the business section at this point. Any questions before we move on? So we've removed living space altogether from our text and we are replacing it with living area, which was used interchangeably with living space before. So the definition is the same. It's just that we've renamed it living area and then we've referenced, that should say, C in comparison to floor area gross. And floor area public. That's just again referring to other sections so that people who are reading our code can quickly identify what items might be related that they want to revisit as part of the definitions. Any questions? Perfect.
I do have one there.
Go ahead.
Where it's, it's saying does not include basements.
Correct.
Should we dive into that a little bit as far as whether or not it's finished into livable space or, because even though it's below grade in a basement, some of them can be quite livable.
I think that that's a fair question. Why don't we look at the code sections that pertain to living area and then revisit whether we want to make that distinction and say, you know, finished basement space. But prior to this, it did not include the basements. So we'll revisit that. I'll put a little comment here just so that we remember to come back to. This is, I think, still page 33, which I think is still the definition section of our book. It's not 33 of the actual text. Let me zoom. It's page 33, but on the text. So here, this is an adult material store. They just used gross public floor area. We've now defined public area versus gross floor area. And I think here they meant public floor area. So it's just the use of those two terms. What does gross public mean? So I've just removed the gross. Same thing with sex shop. You'll see that they just referred to more than 10% of its public, of its floor area. Again, I think that was referring to the public floor area in that section. And so it's the same concept, just being very consistent with terms. That pertains to a different portion of the text that we discussed. So I'm going to skip that for now. Same thing with that one. And the R6R1.5 section, which is on page 44 of our book. This will be in both the R1 and the R2. We just replaced floor area requirements with living area requirements because as you recall, we're using living area for the R1 districts. So I think that it had the same meaning because in that section A, it notes that this does not include garages, basements, breezeways, terraces, porches. The so any of that, that language I removed because it's already defined up above as part of the definition of living area. Mr. Marzullo, just to your point, as we work through this, when you see how they're calculating living area, I don't know that we need to factor in the basement because they're using square footage of the upper floors, not the basement. Sorry, just skipped one. Same thing for minimum dwelling size. Again, we're looking at the minimum first floor living area. I believe it just said area before. So again, just tie it back. It's constituted in the living area. So any sort of porches or other items wouldn't count. And I believe that was the intent of this language. Anyway, the dwelling has to be at least 1,500 square feet in size on the first floor. These are for the R2. Again, it's the same changes that you saw about for the R1 district pertaining to the R2 district. We can skip these changes because that pertains to the possible addition of a B4 district. So I'm just going to push through. Again, we'll, we'll revisit all of this prior to any text amendment. This is just our first working model for all of this. That should be the first one. Yes. Let's see, I am on the conditional zoning certificate, chapter seven, page 89. Oh, here we're talking about an outdoor display and it said 20% of the ground floor area of the principal building. I would interpret that to mean the gross floor area, not necessarily the public floor, the public floor.
Say that again. I'm sorry.
So it currently read the area of the lot devoted to outdoor display shall not exceed 20% of the ground floor area of the principal building.
Right.
So that could mean public floor area or gross floor area. Remember, public floor area is the amount that the public has accessible. When I read that, I think that that was more geared towards the gross floor area, not the public, because they did not use public, which is normally what they meant. They stated when they wanted to just count the public portion. So again, I'm not trying to change this language. I'm trying to bring it up to consistency with our terms. Should say, I'm not trying to change the language. I'm not trying to change the meaning of the language. Same thing when we look at supplemental regulations for landscaping materials on page 89. They talked about the floor area of the principal building. I guess I think that they meant the gross floor area as opposed to the public floor. Senior residential facilities, which is still within chapter seven. This had to do with a senior citizen residential facility with a smaller floor area and less parking than is required for residential dwelling units. Again, I think that they meant gross floor area since a residential doesn't have a public floor area. And here's where we really had to start working on incorporation of the incorporating the gross floor area because it needs to be used for both businesses and residential buildings. And that has to do with chapter eight, check page 91. And here we say that no alteration can exceed 10% of the square footage of the gross floor. And since we are factoring, there might be a slight expansion here because I don't know how, for these purposes, how porches and those sorts of structures were counted because this is gross floor area. Now it's gross floor area of the building, but I would argue that this is actually going to allow for a larger, a potentially larger addition to a non-conforming building. Can I move on?
I think so.
Same thing with the restoration to a damaged building or structure again in the non-conforming section that we allow them to restore to the original floor print and gross floor area. Which I think makes sense. If you have a home that had a porch on it before and it was destroyed, you should be able to rebuild as part of your home, the porch.
Just to clarify, we're talking about at this point now.
I don't think so. Right? This is in the non-conforming building section. So it's not necessarily just residential. I think it would mostly apply to residential, but to the extent that there are non-conforming buildings in the business district, and I'm sure that there are, it would also apply to this.
If it, if they exceed the two-year window, does that mean that they can't repair?
That's what that codes as. Such restoration shall be completed from the date of the damage or destruction. That's not a modification. That was existing text.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering is, does does that make sense to give it a two-year window? I don't know. I think there's, if, if a property has sat vacant for 10 years, should they be able to rebuild the same building? I don't know.
And actually, they don't have to rebuild. It wouldn't be, they just get it started. Throw the shovel forward or replace a couple of bricks and we get started.
It says shall be completed.
I understand. I heard you read it and I have long since getting started within that two-year. And when you have questionable fires and things like that, it might take the fire department a year, a year and a half to kind of come to the conclusion that it's not arson or it is arson or whatever it be. And then you got the insurance things coming in there. There's ways where that situations could happen where that can be contested. And I, I didn't look that up today. I'm sorry. I thought we had modified that. Construction must begin. Or we have.
Well, that's a, I haven't familiarized myself with this text enough to really have a strong, you know, opinion one way or the other, but you could easily say such restoration must commence or shall commence within the two years. And that way it would be very clear that it, as long as you begin the construction process, probably through the pulling of a permit. And I think a building permit's good for two years. That would extend it out to four years.
The, the one thing that's on my mind, and it's a unique case, I guess, is on the corner of 303 and State, that fire, that home burned down. It's been two years. Is that now a non-buildable lot?
Inspector Wilson, I don't think that you treat that as a non-buildable lot, correct? It would just have to make it, it would either have to fit within the current regulation. So your side setbacks would have to work, your front and back setbacks would have to work, or you'd have to go for variance. And your hardship would be that you have a non-buildable lot. So I think that there's two different avenues to, to proceed. Is, would that be your understanding?
Yeah, we had a, having a lot over at Manning, I called when I encountered a recorder today because we wanted to see when that was needed. And it was long enough ago that it's a legal non-conforming lot. And, you know, people ask us, can we tear down a house on a legal non-conforming lot and rebuild? And I believe you can. It's still a legal non-conform.
And that's a non-conforming lot, not a non-conforming building. So this is saying a non-conforming building, if a building's non-conforming, perhaps it's set, it's, it's, doesn't meet the setback requirements. And in order to continue to put it in that exact same spot and, and not meet the setback requirements, you need to do it within two years. You can still build on that lot, but it would have to then meet the current regulations, such as setback regulations.
But as you point out, you've got to be the, the option of the BCA.
Correct.
Consider hardship.
Correct.
Well, do you want to change the language in this one here? To commence within two years?
I think it would be fair.
I do too. Insurance can take a year and a half easy. So a two-year period is.
Especially if there's questions about the origin of the fire.
Right. Okay.
It's starting to seem pretty cut and dry.
Simple enough. Again, relating to the alteration, enlargement, or reconstruction of a building occupied by a non-conforming use on a non-conforming building or a non-conforming use of buildings and land, just changing it to gross floor. I think that that's what was meant by floor here. Anyway, it's just that there was no clear definition. Same thing with non-conforming lots in the residential lot section. Section 9.2, parking. This is page 95. This specifies that parking, when parking spaces have to to be brought up to code, and it says an existing building is altered and/or there's an increase in the number dwelling units, seating capacity, or I think this means gross floor area because that's when we want to look at parking is anytime that there's a change in the floor. Chapter 9.3, this is where we had a definition of floor area. But here for purposes of parking, they say where floor is designated as the standard for determining parking space requirements, they called it the net floor area that is accessible to the public will be used. That's effectively our definition for public floor area. So when they're referring to floor area within the parking, it's the public floor.
So you cross that up and correct the public floor. Okay.
Same thing with seating capacity. When you look at seating capacity, obviously the seats are where there's public accessibility for, so I just adjusted that to say public floor area. Which is again, I think what it meant anyway, because the definition of floor area for this is right above it, which was net floor area open to the public. That dealt with group homes, so we can skip that for now. And each of these items, wherever it said floor area, has defined above to be net floor area available to public. I just changed it to public for the area to stay consistent. Here's where you saw they actually used GFA, which means gross floor area, and NFA, which meant net floor area. Based upon our definitions now, I've, I've changed that to say public floor area for retail spaces. For shopping centers, I just said 1,000 square feet. If we want to say gross floor, we can there. I didn't think it was necessary because we don't say that with respect to warehousing. We just say per square, you know, per X square feet. I think it's per 1,000 square feet. So it didn't seem like it needed there, but you can certainly add gross floor if you want there. And then again, right here in warehouses where you saw they just use square foot feet as opposed to gross or public. So I just kept it consistent with that. Questions on that? The parking section. Don't think there's any more parking. Site plan review. This is in section 11.2, which is page 116. This is about expansion of the floor area of a permitted use. I assume they meant gross floor area here. So I just put in gross. And we're back to 16.2, which deals with adult stores and adult material on page 138. Here they refer to the items as gross public floor. So I just removed gross. It's just the floor area, the public floor as we define it. And that took me back up to the top. So that's all that we've done so far with respect to floor area, living space and living area. Any concerns on that? I go. Perfect. So that moves us to group home versus family home versus institution of human care. At our April meeting, we looked at the definitions of, our, our book does not define what an institution of human care is. We looked at some other definitions of institution of human care and felt that it was pretty vague, including doctors' offices and any sorts of medical facilities. And so institutions of human care was a conditionally permitted use within our residential districts. So we've decided, at least as of the April meeting, I think the consensus was that we remove institutions of human care as a conditionally permitted use within the residential district, since it really doesn't fit with what other uses are permitted within the residential districts. Group home versus family home, group home and family home. First of all, those were also not defined, but we, we looked at some of the regulations dealing with group homes and family homes and we removed those as an accessory use. So what, what the, what we saw from the Fair Housing Act is that we really can't treat group homes different than any other residential facility, residential housing. So to limit where group homes could be or to have any restrictions on them was probably problematic. So we removed group home, family home parking regulations, and we also removed it as an accessory use. So a group home can be anywhere that a, any other family home could be. We also started to dive into the definition of family. And I think Ms. Engelmann did some research on that and sent us some information.
And so did Ms. Crew.
That's correct from, correct. And so if you want to present anything, Ms. Engelmann, about your findings, or if you have any suggestions, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, I don't know if anybody has taken a time to read through here, but there's a quite a variety of definition of family. Some, some of them are very quantitative in terms of how many people. And I don't know how easy that is to really track and, and enforce. But some of the definitions that are more broad in terms of we have people living together that are maybe that are related by blood, marriage, et cetera, along with others as well. And so it's very difficult really to quantify. And, you know, who are others? Others could be fostered children that you have in your home temporarily. Some of the communities include housekeepers or house nannies as part of the family, especially if they are living there. So you know, it's some of these definitions with the opposite ends and try to exclude what was not family, but then you know, you could come up with a whole exclusionary list and it's easy to miss something. So it's it's kind of a toss up, you know, I mean, how we when you deal with homes where there are mentally retarded or other types of institution, you know, what we have called institutional homes. Those, those are people that are living together as a quote unquote family. So but they're not related. So what do all those scenarios have in common? What I see, at least what they have in common, is that they live as a family unit and there were some communities that defined a family as those who lived as a family unit, meaning they shared common meals, common, you know, schedules. Common, common areas in the home for the same purposes, so that whether you're related or not. You're kind of picking as if you are a family unit. And it's kind of hard to define otherwise, you know, so.
We think the group home just had the caveat of there was under the supervision of someone. So there was like a residential person there for supervision of it.
Which would have been why it's accessory use, because the primary use would be someone's living there that's not part of the group home, I guess is.
Right, right. That was, I think, the only difference that with that stood out to me for the group home.
Are we trying to micromanage?
We might be. Absolutely. I think.
What is it we don't want? Let's back up. That you don't want.
I'm I'm what prompted us to remove it as an accessory use? I understand that the Fair Housing Act. We saw it. Were we challenged on that regulation or anything? It's just we we just decided to undertake it.
Certainly when we started looking at this, it's we have group home in our texts, we have institution of human care and we have family home and what does each one of those mean? And we had, there has to be some distinction between institution of human care and group home because we had one as an accessory use and one as a conditional. So it started as a definition. Where do we? How do we define these things? We have them in our textbook. What do they mean? And as that's evolved, we looked at some of the regulations that exist and I think that the last, you know, kind of consensus that we wrapped it was to remove group home. If we leave group home, I certainly think we somehow need to define it. And I think that that's problematic as well.
Okay, we we know we've got these definitions. The group home now that we'd have to think we should be defining what term family home names.
I think for our text, family home and group home were one in the same. When you look at, because that those appeared predominantly in the parking and they called it group home slash family home. What does? So I think that they were using those synonymously. And then they were using institution of human care to be something different.
I think the group home came into being a number of years ago, the situation with veterans. It's a group and group home. Brought the attention by letter, not in person. Can't do it. And then so I'm talking about, I think that within the nineties. Just so I remember, I think that's when I inserted. If this is true, then what's this mean?
As I was going through it, I included definitions that those other communities have for group home and whatnot. Reading through them, it kind of seems like it's either archaic that they just haven't updated it because I think in a lot of cases it wouldn't hold water. But you know, so you know, when you look at other sources, it gives you a flavor, but it doesn't mean that that's necessarily the way we want to go. And I just threw that in there because in the context of how they define family at that time, because they had the other definitions, you know, things get defined contextual. And we take away those other things and you either change the other definition or it goes away or.
We, as, you know, we could leave group home as an accessory use. Again, I'm not so sure that it holds any water. We don't define what a group home is, but we could leave the text group home as an accessory use. And punt it for another day.
I think that's that term itself is just archaic. In the context of like county MRDD. That, you know, they really got tried to get away from some of those labels, if you will, because the point is that the residents are no different than other residents being able to live in a community. And so to distinguish and set that aside, I think is inappropriate.
So are you suggesting using a different term or are you suggesting remove it?
I would suggest removing it.
I'm I'm looking at it more from the, I guess, kind of a halfway house. I don't know what the what the appropriate vernacular would be, but is that something that would be considered a group home?
Is it?
Yes.
Is it? Is it something that we can't restrict? This is something we don't want to restrict if we're able to.
I think if you get involved with federal state government, usually are involved in these things.
And I'm I'm not smart on those regulations. I'll I'll be frank with that.
Well, when you say halfway home, what are you speaking of?
Basically, recent parolees recently released from from prison and trying to find a place to get back on their feet.
They are.
They are. And so what as as we're getting into this, I think we need to look at it from every angle, not just altruistic ones.
But I I don't know that it's even looking at it from altruistic angles. It's that what can we do within the confines of the?
Yeah.
What, what are, what are we allowed to do? Correct. And that's where, that's where we almost went down this path of do we want to define a family because outside of specifying how many people could be in a home. There's very little that we can do because it has to be neutral across all residential homes. It cannot be unique characteristics for protected classes.
It seems like the only way we'd be able to do that is basically people per square foot.
That's a possibility, but man, that's a lot of regulation.
Yeah, there's not no enforcement there.
No.
But I think using, I think if you define family, there's several of those communities that Cindy identified that have that generic definition of family, just generic, but they have a definition. People who live together, share common space, share common things. If if it's going to be defined, I would do something so neutral and generic.
But is it so neutral that it's really not achieving any objective? So what's the objective that's being achieved by just defining family to mean people who sit together at a table and have dinner and live in the same house?
We have our one and our two family. Presidential, right?
We don't have family. We have residential.
And they're specifically called single family dwellings.
Right.
Correct.
I mean, you know, this one, a group of individuals not necessarily related by blood, marriage, adoption or guardianship, living together in a dwelling unit as a single housekeeping unit under a common housekeeping management plan based on an intentionally structured relationship providing organization stability. Or.
Yeah, that would be tough.
I I would say then that I end up precludes having roommates.
Yeah.
There's, there's, if if you buy a house and you've got three, four guys living together, they're not providing stability for each other.
That's true.
They're providing some financial stability. They're contributing to the business. But again, everyone then, you you could argue that anyone is providing some level of stability that lives together.
True.
So that's why I I just don't see it. Reason, you know, the our our primary objective is to have one single family home per lot and we're achieving that through other things. I understand the concern of halfway house, but if a halfway house wants to come in, I don't think that Arizona protects it anyway, and I don't think can protect that. So I don't think that we can ever craft our zoning to necessarily achieve some objective that you want to achieve.
I mean, if those people are living there, you know, not a twenty three hour short stay, you know, one night or two night, but that is their home. Then that is no different than anybody else living in their own home. So.
So I I do think with group homes, you could, I believe, limit the number of people based on some kind of square footage.
But it couldn't be just for group homes. That specifically was addressed in those regulations. You cannot just have it for group home. You can specify across R one. X number of people can be in a household per square foot, but it cannot be if you're.
It has to be the same for everybody.
Has to be the same for.
Yeah, I would not want to define it to any numerical level at all. I think that's just so.
I think the enforceability of it is next to impossible. So I guess, where are we on this? Are we here, I think stronger opinions that we remove group home as a accessory use, so it's just treated like any other residential property? Or do we leave it and not define group home and kick the can down the road? So by having the the regulation? Does it? Does it cause any damage by having it in there and kicking it down the road? It the it causes damage to the person who would want to put in that sort of, doesn't cause any damage to.
It has a perception of difference. And so I think that's a problem. That's looking at it as on the enforcement side, probably. But it has that perception. Has it? Has it been a problem up to now? Probably not.
Unlikely.
But.
Do we? Again, we're going to revisit this later since we want to just for now continue to leave it out. It's easy to go back and reinsert it. Later. If if we decide to do that before we move forward with the text.
Well, I think like Ms. Crew stated, having that definition in there creates the perception or the argument, if you will, and there should be some issue that, oh, well, you're singling out this class of people. And so if we can't single out that class of people, then why aren't we? I would feel more comfortable removing it. But like you said, if you want to tag a note so that when it comes time to review. Because I don't think there's really anything that we can do about it. So why? Why call attention to it? Historical thing.
And it's an area where the law has relatively recently rapidly evolved evolved. So that's part of why it probably still remains. Okay, so I just pass it. There it is. I flagged it within the R one, but we can well, it will, the same will be true of the R two. Is there anything else with respect to these, this this item? Or term consistency before we move on to new business?
I would, I would request like a five minute break before we go into the new business.
Okay.
Let me just ask, the definition of family that we currently have, we're just going to keep that in there.
What definition are you referring to?
In our current zoning rule.
Which page?
Family is defined on page eight.
One or more persons occupying a premise and living as a single housekeeping unit.
It's pretty easy, right? Simple.
Right.
So I like it.
Anything.
Okay, well, you start.
I think.
It's generic.
It's generic, right?
Right. Perfect. So I guess we will take a five minute recess and resume at seven fifty three. That works.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, I'd like to resume the zoning commission meeting. The next order of business is the, the review of the conservation developments. This was another topic that was on the list. I would at least like to look at two topics. One is the front yard setback as specified on page 50 of our current text. The minimum setback from a proposed public right-of-way shall be 30 feet. So homes can be, if a right-of-way is 15 feet off the road, a home could be 45 feet off the road. And when you look at the the newest conservation development, which is Skyland, Skyland is a 30-foot setback. I also looked at a few of the other conservation developments. Walden is a 50-foot setback. And Wakefield Run, the lower portion is a 75-foot setback, and the upper portion is a 20-foot setback. If you've driven through Skyland, one of the concerns that I have in Skyland is proximity to homes to the road. It doesn't allow for a lot of safety net, if you will, for young children, anyone running through. There's just not a lot of opportunity for a driver to see them and, and, and slow down. And so one of the things that I think that we should discuss is, should we increase that minimum setback from 30 feet to maybe 50 feet? Again, we're not increasing the required lot sizes. In fact, the Skyland developments lot sizes are almost identical to Walden's, Walden's lot sizes. It's just setting the home further back on the lot, so to encourage a little bit more front yard and take away a little bit from the backyard. Does anyone else have thoughts on that? Again, the other thing to note from Skyland is Skyland has a 20-foot, is it 20-foot road? I think it's 20, because now the township trustees increased it to 22, 24.
24.
So then it was 22 for, so Skyland's road is a little bit more narrow too when you go through it. So when you're driving through these subdivisions, if you look, Skyland's road is 22 feet. The township trustees have increased that to 24-foot required road width. And then having a larger front yard setback would push those homes even further away from center line. So.
Is there a rear yard setback?
No. I don't think there's a rear yard setback for any of our.
All of our, all the other ones have rear yard setbacks.
R2 is 15 around and R1 is 30 and 50 on the rear.
Yeah. And. Unless you have the, the different lot sizes for a 32 or a three-quarter acre lot, it's 15 around.
Right.
For 66,000 square foot, it's 15 around. And for whatever reason, for 65,340 square foot, it's 20 and 40. So I, I didn't understand why a smaller lot has a larger setback than the 60, 66,000 square foot. I think that might be something we want to clear up, but I was looking at, obviously, kind of doing a little research on it and feel like a larger setback in the in the the conservation development makes all the sense in the world with everything else we have set up. And, and to not have a rear yard setback is kind of surprising.
Well, I know there's, there's, I believe it's a 50-foot setback from the conservation.
Hundred. Or no, I'm sorry, I'm thinking the, the.
Project boundary.
Is a hundred foot. Yep.
I don't know if we've ever had a problem with the rear setback in a conservation, have we? We can certainly incorporate one.
We have a lot of.
Yeah, that's encroachment to conservation, but that would, pushing the house away from the lot line, would it have any impact on encroachment?
In most of the conservation units. They almost all, there's not a ton of them where the, the homes back up to one another. So I understand that.
I agree about increasing the setback from 30 to 50.
And I, I guess my, my question on the rear yard setback would be accessory buildings in conservation developments. Do they follow the accessory setback?
Have an accessory building on a conservation. There's a zero lot line for the rear and 10-foot for the side.
Great.
So that's, that's.
So we might need that setback. We, yeah, our HOA, which is a conservation, HOA, we do have a requirement that they have to be a certain distance away, in part because of the encroachment issues, because if you put your barn directly on the lot line, there is the potential that they'll want to then cut behind their barn to maintain some space, and so that results in encroachment. So I think that that's a good tie-in to the encroachment.
Plus, we just went through, Bill, I think it was while you were chair, that we're, we put a setback on agricultural accessory buildings. It was either a rear or side yard setback on agricultural.
Not an agricultural.
Ag, we can't do anything. Arizona, Arizona doesn't apply.
Yeah, there's an ag extension. They.
So do you think, again, we would be within section four, add an E? Or actually, we can just say the minimum side yard setback. I think we did this. I'm just looking at how they worded. I don't know that we need. Mr. Muzo, where's one section that we were looking at that has the rear yard?
So it's, it's in a bunch of them. I, I, that, that was one of the things I kind of came up with as well as I was looking through this is, it might be worthwhile to just put in a table. But it's in 6R1.4. It's on page 42, and you have in.
There, they refer to it as a, the minimum rear yard depth. Minimum rear yard depth, and then yes, yes, we definitely, okay, because in conservation, they say the minimum side setback as opposed to yard depth. And so that's why I'm just looking at, okay. But we can easily say for E minimum rear yard depth. And do you think it should be the same 10 feet as?
Well, I'm the side yard.
No, I, I think the, the side yard and rear yard should be 15 with, so it brings it in line with some of the other setbacks that we have.
These are for much larger acreage sizes, right?
I mean, so, well, one of them's a three-quarter acre lot, which most conservation developments aren't three-quarter.
Okay, and if you put in a 15-yard setback.
That has 15. So you're suggesting a 15-yard?
Yeah, on, on the, on both the rear and the side.
I mean.
You're significantly between our 50-foot increase in the front. That's a 20-foot increase, and then a 10-foot on the sides and a 10-foot on the rear, you've significantly changed the envelope, buildable envelope there. And it's, it's still a very large buildable envelope. And so if, if we're going to go with a, with a building width of, let's say, 125 feet, right? You take off the 30 feet, so you're up to 95 feet.
We have one home, we have one home in our subdivision that's maxed out with the 10 yards, 10-foot setbacks. So I want to know, and it's not a huge home when you drive by it. It's just that the way that they had to build it is wide.
Well, I believe the way that reads it, I think it says it kind of funny, but in the conservation district, said the houses have to be 30 feet apart. Divide that up, it's a 15-foot setback for the house on each.
On each side.
No, on each side.
Yeah. On each side.
And I, I don't know if it just makes sense for uniformity. If we, if we're to put in our, in, in the code setbacks and size of the lot, all right, rear yard, side yard, front, right-of-way, and just so that, oh, hey, I've got a two-acre lot, this is my buildable envelope. It might be a little bit easier than, I mean, we've got like eight pages of we have to go through to figure out, all right, which.
Well, in part that has to do with when the lot was deeded.
Kind of, sort of. I mean, what I'm saying is if you just put in a like an Excel table that shows the size of the lot. Because it's, when, when the, when the lot was deeded is of like zero significance as to what their.
He looks at when it's deeded all the time.
Okay, but what does that have to do with their setbacks? Their setbacks are still the same.
Well, I, I look at that when it's legal non-conforming.
Yeah.
I think the problem might be that up until now, Wakefield and Walden, we've, we've said a 10-foot setback, so if we change it to 15 foot.
All of those become legal non-conforming.
They'll be there non-conforming, but you know, neighbor Joe's gonna say, well, why can't I put it 10 feet like my neighbor did? I mean, I, I don't know why, the reason we want to change that from 10 to 15.
But you, you already said that it's already basically a 15-foot setback, because they have to be 30, 30 feet apart.
But that's only, so here's how that works, though. Let's say one house is not 10 feet in, so this, this lot was built first in the conservation development. That lot, they'll build at the, at minimum of 10 feet. The house, the deck, so it would have to be 20 feet. Our, our D restrictions require that too. So the minimum distance between the homes is 30 feet, but not necessarily every home within there is going to have 15-foot setback. Because if the one home used, you know, set theirs back 20 feet from the line, the other home is now permitted to be 10 feet from the line.
Yeah, it's crazy.
That is crazy.
That's how, that's how.
That is crazy.
Which is why I would make, especially since really what it comes down to is, all right, I bought this house, I've got this site, and then someone puts it here, and now I got to move my house 10 feet because they built first.
Right, that's, that's basically true. That's basically what he's saying, so, and that's terrible.
Yes, exactly.
Well, and the other thing to think about, there's not many lots left in conservation.
Today. Today.
Well, as, do we have another 100 acres to go to another conservation, maybe? Sure. Get some assembling and so forth.
But if you render all of these homes that are not at a 15-foot setback, non-conforming buildings, they're all limited on their expansion of their homes at that point. Every one of them that it does not meet the setback requirements is a non-conforming building. That's correct. And therefore, they can't have any variation that expands their building by more than 10%.
You don't really have a lot of room to play with in each conservation district, because the, the way, I believe the way the code reads is three, three houses per so that's, that sets a lot at a third of an acre.
Minimum.
Min, minimum, of course, yeah.
And so you have much area to build on anyhow, really.
Right, and when we're looking at the minimum, the, the 15-foot is on a 0.75 acre lot.
And I know in Spanish, they don't allow.
Where does it, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing where it says it's three houses per acre.
This is the sheet that I took off of the site. Three dwellings per acre, but this is kind of.
The only place I've seen anything about three was actually on the shared driveway.
So I just took the approved site plan and, and copied off of there today.
And, and you know what? That also could have been something it, it, a vestige from previous version of the book. Because after Skyland, we instituted the yield plan.
Well, that's right.
As well as it all had to be accessible from one, one primary road system. One primary road system. And to Marcus to answer your initial question, yeah, I'm fine with with saying, hey, let's. Increase the the setback from the road, especially since there is the. What I think we refer to as the pedestrian circulation system, so the sidewalks. There's. There's always a concern of. Blinking your eyes and your kids are running down the street and twenty feet can make a big difference.
And I and I do also agree with you on the rear yard setback because I think that. Know that we do have problems with encroachment. I think that having accessory building very close to the lot line. Is problematic because it does encourage potential encroachment because many people want to put their building as far back on their lot as possible. And so having some level of setback there, I don't think is problematic. And I also don't think that there's any homes that are built anywhere near the setback line. So we wouldn't have to worry about running afoul of of nonconforming building. I think the. The idea of fifteen yard setback in principle is a good one. I think that we already have a minimum separation of thirty feet, which effectively creates that thirty, that same fifteen yard setback. Without changing that language. And that's for that one, I would just be in favor of maintaining the language of a minimum separation plus a minimum side yard setback. But if we wanted to go to a side yard setback of fifteen feet and remove the minimum separation and the minimum side setback. Uh, then that would be a possibility.
Not that the the five feet makes that big of a difference. I'm also now I'm wondering, all right, if people are putting in accessory buildings, are they going to be twenty feet away from each other? Because they can be. Cause the the setback, the the thirty feet between houses doesn't apply to accessory buildings.
Correct, so the.
So you could potentially have two sheds twenty, which doesn't matter, yeah. I I would be much more interested in the rear yard and the the front yard setbacks, absolutely.
The other notation I had here is something that we could can look at while you're continuing to chew on that. Is I don't believe that there's a minimum lot width at the street right away or the building line. And so for other. For for other sections, there there are there is. Now perhaps just due to the size of the homes that are going in conservation developments plus the setbacks. We already are inherently getting large enough lot sizes at the front street right away. Uh, but it was just something that I noted with respect to the R one and R two that is not on the conservation development. If we wanted to look at separation distancing. But again, I think that. Perhaps that's already achieved.
I mean. I I was already kind of toying with the distance from the right away as well as the um street width. And I would not at all be opposed to at least seventy five feet street width.
That would be, yeah, every lot's going to be larger than that because you figure you have it.
Um, well, and and then of course, we're going to have to have the R. And as well, I'm I'm a total sack, but I I think to to propose at least seventy five. Because. There's there's just something about me that appreciates the consistency of having each. Piece named in each section, like if you if you look at the sections, we have the. Building width for the two acres, one seventy five. For the acre and a half, which is sixty five thousand three hundred forty square feet. It's one twenty five, but then for the three quarter acre and the sixty six thousand square foot lot, there's no building with definition. And I just, I feel like if we've got it defined for two, why don't we have it defined for four? And then include conservation district, which is.
I I'm okay with potentially for conservation. I don't know if I want to touch lots between nineteen seventy five because we would potentially cause. Some lots to become unbuildable without going through. Without going through the BZA because we don't, we would need to know what those lots look like to know whether what the. Appropriate size would be. Those lots are already set, so.
Yeah.
We can't, you know, why would you put a minimum seventy five feet now when it's been set anyway?
Because um when you look at them, they've already got a. Street width requirement, so unless it comes in triangular and then goes like this.
But what I'm saying is no.
And they want to build that at the at the narrowest point. You don't. I'm I'm just. Trying to get consistency.
I'm a big fan of consistency.
And I guess that's also, I don't understand the. Specifically sixty six thousand square foot lot and the sixty five thousand three hundred forty foot square lot. The smaller one has a larger setback than the larger one.
I would suspect that it had to what the codes were at the this time, so they did is they grandfathered them in. And so what they did not want to do is render a ton of not legal nonconforming buildings. So. They were able to, they followed what the code was at that time and they carved out exceptions. Okay, so what I'll do is again, just like this time, I'll provide some sample language. Um, what did we want for the, do we have any any idea what we want to see for the? Um, minimum lot width at street part right away or the building line? Seventy five is what you mentioned.
We don't, we don't need to undertake this if I'm the only one interested. If everyone else is fine with the way it is, I just, I'm fine going with the um. The setback from the right away.
Front and rear.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that. Um, if it just seems to be kind of pedantic and unnecessary, then we won't indulge, that's fine.
Well, I found very interesting that's what you had to say, and I think it's another way of achieving some separation. Between parcels.
More more than anything, I think what it does is it requires a more uniform parcel size. Throughout the conservation development. Um, what we've seen in some developments is. All right, well. I'm gonna make these lots a lot smaller and this lot much, much bigger so that I can get more homes in because. If these are all uniform uniform sized lots, I'm not going to be able to put as many homes in.
That's all pre-yield plan and pre-maximum.
Even lot size. Even even with a yield plan, though, you can still run into that.
But the largest lot now can be four times, no more than four times the smallest one, right? Through.
Yeah.
That language.
So I mean, if if we're looking at quarter acre lot sizes or third, um, based on that, then then you're looking at a. One point two acre lot.
Correct.
Okay, compared to it to a third acre lot or one acre compared to a quarter acre.
Or and it's it's for the reality is most of these are point five to point eight acres. So if the smallest lot's point five, the largest one to be two acres. That's not a large deviation. Because you figure that some lots might have large riparian setbacks on them, some may have ravines on them, so they we've got to make sure that that. Of that available spacing is there so that they can create those variations as needed to account for the total.
Unless that's not our objective. Unless our objective is to reduce the number of homes that go into the development.
I don't think that that will reduce the number.
Well, if everyone can only have, let's say, half acre lot. Because of the setbacks, because of the 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 lot requirements. And then there are riparian setbacks. Now there are going to be areas that are not buildable.
But remember, on a hundred acre parcel, assuming that the whole one hundred acres is buildable. They can have fifty homes. You could argue.
Little lower.
Little lower because of roads and. Let's just say, okay, let's say forty five homes, right?
Sure.
You can cram those in a very small area, which would result in a large amount of conservation space. Or you can spread out those lots. If we're spreading out the lots, you're going to have less conservation space, right?
Potentially. You are, because the yield plan is going to determine, all right, let's let's say. You can get forty forty five homes in here.
Right.
All right, but then when they put the forty five home plan on a. Topographical map, they might find, oh, shoot, we can only put in forty two.
And that's as a result of the yield plan.
No, that's that's also a result of having uniform lots on top of it, on on top of a topographic overlay.
I I don't think, I don't think you're, so you're saying uniform lot lots. But they have a hundred acres to work from, so that you're saying you're suggesting that a large portion of that would be completely undevelopable. Because if one hundred acres of that's developable, they'd find the spacing. For forty five lots, right? So really, it's the yield plan that's going to ultimately dictate. What can happen on that conservation though?
Yield plan will determine how many homes can be on that development, not necessarily where the conservation space is.
Correct, but we've now, the yield plan will said one hundred, one hundred, all one hundred acres of this is developable. So you can put your lot, your subdivision, anywhere on this hundred acres that you want.
Yep.
I'm I'm confused, so with your version. Once the yield plan is set, and even though you've got a hundred acres and the entire hundred acres. Not saying it's the total. That would then dictate because you have. Right, because you have to have these uniform sizes. So because of.
Remember that all one hundred of that because of the yield plan, we already know that when all one hundred of that is buildable, so they can put that. Those forty five houses anywhere on that lot, being established, that whole lot is buildable.
In in the notional example, yes.
And if it's not, if only thirty acres of it is developable, then they can put the conservation vote anywhere within those thirty acres. But they can then only have fifteen fifteen holes. I don't think that changing the lot size is going to have much impact or setting a very rigid uniformity to these lots. Is going to have much impact. It's the yield plan that's going to have the impact because the yield plan's dictating how much of this is developable.
That no, the topography is determining how much of it is developable.
Which then tells you how many homes are available.
Correct. Correct, so the the yield plan. Is dictating, all right, this is how many homes you can develop.
Right.
And then the topography. Separate from the yield plan is going to dictate where those homes are located. On the on the plot.
Correct, but to build thirty homes, we have to have sixty hall sixty acres of developable land. So we know that they're going to be able to fit thirty homes in sixty acres. We've established that there's sixty acres of developable land.
Yes.
Right, so without, they they should be able to get thirty homes regardless of any of our requirements. They are because they have sixty acres of available space to fit thirty homes.
They have sixty acres of develop of of available space, but it's not necessarily contiguous.
It would have to be because of the yield plan has to say a subdivision can go on this, so it would have to be contiguous. Because remember that for the yield plan, we're going to require them to come in with a a lot, a development that looks like a subdivision. Two acre lots and say, okay, yep, you can build a house here where you show, you can build a house here where you show, but if a subdivision was. If the top was all choppy, it wouldn't be a developable two acre minimum subdivision.
I don't know that that's entirely true because you can have. Riparian areas on two acre lots that still give you a buildable envelope. So that when you have a quarter or a half acre lot, you don't necessarily have a buildable envelope in that area.
Then they would just move into a different portion of that two acre lot.
There presumably will already be another lot there that is developable because it is. A conservation development, so they're they're not just going to pick a. All right, we're going to put one here, we're going to put one here, we're going to put one here, they're all going to be contiguous. And if you can build a two acre subdivision with a with a.
Why the conservation development lots have to be contiguous?
Because that's how they maximize profit.
That's how they maximize profit, but that doesn't have to be what they do. To maximize. A lot, the smallest amount of space is arguably what you do, but almost none of the conservation developments here in Hinckley are. The smallest lot possible. Because from an economic standpoint, it makes more sense for the developers to space out the homes. To create some sort of green space between homes and areas. At where they feel the need to or where there's wetlands to not. Reduce cost of the development build out to the smallest amount possible. We don't, I don't think we've seen singles conservation development where they've attempted to maximize. To reduce the material cost to the lowest possible amount.
Can I go back to something for a minute?
Yeah.
You were talking about sixty six thousand square foot and sixty five thousand three hundred forty square foot.
Yes, sir.
And in a way, our code reads, it says, one and a half acre lot equals sixty six thousand square feet. That's a mathematical error. One point five acre lot is sixty five thousand three hundred forty. And I thought we corrected that a couple of years ago, but we must have missed.
So I'm I'm looking at.
Forty three, right? The minimum lot area is sixty six thousand square feet.
It's forty, so forty three, it says minimum lot area is. To a minimum lot area, sixty six thousand square feet.
Okay, so that.
Then on forty four in three A. It says minimum lot area sixty five thousand three hundred and forty square feet, so we have both of them still in there.
Well, and and the one is is correct, is sixty five thousand three forty, because that's. I think we discovered this a couple of years ago. And evidently, we missed that one page forty three.
And. But it it also specifically says lots of record as of November seventh nineteen seventy five. All right, but then. The next one is lots of record as of February eleventh nineteen ninety four. So. So because there are two different dates. So because there are two different dates, it makes me wonder, all right. Do we intentionally have both of these in here?
I absolutely.
Yes.
No, because in nineteen seventy-five, we allowed one point five acre lot. And prior to that, we have some half acre lots, and we have some three-quarter acre lots. But when somebody did the math on one point five acres, they called it sixty-six thousand square feet, and that's just, that's incorrect. The math is wrong. And it, and it just may have been an oversight or something.
So as long as we don't have six hundred and sixty square foot variance in any lots, then we're, we can actually remove that piece.
I believe so.
Okay. Sorry.
So.
I own a vacant lot that's one and a half acres. There is a lot of record from nineteen seventy-two. And that one and a half acres goes to the center of the road. But the code now for that reads, not including the center of the road. Is that where the bad math comes in?
I don't think so, because some of our roads go to some of our last center.
If you look on the engineering website, you'll actually.
If you look where?
On the GIS, the Medina County Engineers website. You'll see some lots begin at center of look road, and those are deeded as center of road. And some lots are off the right way, and that's deeded as the right way, but that's.
I don't know why.
That just.
But I'll check that for you. And I think it was a lot of lots on.
The first two. So. I'm not sure where, where we.
And let's just, we, I think what we all tend to agree on is, let's go with a rear yard and a front yard setback. For conservation development.
I would like to see what, you know, unfortunately, won't know how well our plan takes shape until. We see a conservation development come through again, if there are. Uh, but I think the yield plan is going to significantly change the look of conservation developments relative to what you're seeing now. So. So right now, we're just doing a front yard and a rear yard setback. And the rear yard is a ten-foot setback, same as to match the side or.
Fifteen?
Well, the other district, ten. The other conservation.
Thirty between parcels. But I'm saying.
In, in which other, which other? Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Here's what the effect of that will be, though. The, the effect is not going to be on the house. It's going to be on the shed. And so you're putting these people's sheds much further forward in their subdivision. Is that the desired outcome or not the desired outcome? To me, I would want my shed back as far as I can away from my home. So creating fifteen yard setback is undesirable. Compared to a smaller setback. What are we trying to achieve with the rear yard setback? I think we're certainly trying to achieve a, a prevent encroachment onto conservation land. What else are we trying to achieve with a rear yard setback? And what's the necessary square footage or distance to achieve that?
I would agree with you. I think, I think if this, if the shed is set on the zero outline in the rear. Uh, and then behind that is conservation district. People aren't going to probably, you know, move behind it, but if you've got ten or fifteen feet, they're going to keep encroaching. Now, that's not, it's not a zoning problem. It's a problem for the people.
So I think he's, you're, you're actually disagreeing with Marcus. Marcus is saying ten feet is a good and will reduce the encroachment. Well, what you just said is that if it's on the zero, it, it, having no setback will reduce encroachment.
But either way, it's not our problem. It's the problem of the people who manage their conservation. I had one on the skyline.
Yes and no.
And I, I guess I'm also.
It is, you're correct in that the enforcement has to be on the, the people who manage the development. But it's also from the township's perspective in the, in the sense that we gave this quid pro quo of. Hey, you get this development to be here with these smaller lots because we want to have this protected space. And now we as a township are suffering because someone is cutting some of them protected space. So the township is being affected by the encroachment, even though they're not the ones who are responsible for the enforcement.
I also wonder, and I, obviously, I don't know every lot in all the, um, in all the. Conservation developments, but if there are any lots that are back to back.
So you'll see that on corner lots, you know, for instance, our street, when you have a loop and you have to, you'll see a corner. I know, otherwise, we don't have any, Skyland does not have any, because they have the green space. Except for corner space and that Wakefield.
And this is, this is what we got into when we were talking about the setbacks. A couple of years ago, we were talking about, okay, well, if it's right on the lot line, you can have a neighbor that says, no, you can't come out of my lot line to. Or onto my lot to fix your, your shed, because you put it right on the zero lot line. And that's.
I, I think it should be.
Okay, fifty and ten.
What's fif- fifty?
Fifty up front and ten in the back.
Perfect.
I'm fine with that.
That is all that I had for new business this week. I'll provide some language and then move forward with that, and then you guys can review it again and advance to our next meeting. Moving on to the next items of business, I sent each of you a list of the topics to still be discussed. One was conservation developments, which was on this agenda, automobile service stations, nuisances, senior housing and riparian setbacks. So the other ones that I had on that list at this point, as of April, when I sent this list. Are there any topics that people would like to see added to the list? And what is the next topic that you would like to start discussing?
If we don't leave conservation development, there's one item I'd like to add under that topic.
Under conservation development?
Right.
Certainly.
Yeah. And maybe it's a question first, because I couldn't find it, but. You know, when I look at the comprehensive plan, it speaks of that, that. The presence of sanitary and water service is necessary for construction, conservation development. And I see Wayne would be regarding sewage disposal for the conservation development. But I don't see anything that says that. And it's always talked about that. You can't build a conservation development unless there's water and sewer. So I'm curious whether, um, that should be something we look at adding. Because, or am I overlooking it somewhere in the conservation development?
No, I, I think that the reason that they, you, you say that for sewer and water is particularly for sewer, you have to now. Through EPA standards, you're required to have a primary septic system and, and a backup septic site. And so that's very, it's not achievable on fewer, smaller than two acre lots. And so that's where it comes into play.
Same thing's happening when we're half acre lots. Um, we had a couple of calls on someone madly. Next guy wanted to buy it, and he said, can I, is it a buildable lot? And I said, well, it is, for zoning, but call health department. Health department said it's not big enough for a septic system. Because they've changed the way they, they require you to put your septic system.
And now for some existing lots, though, they will allow it's runoff. So essentially, you're not capturing within your soil. All of your own sanitary waste, it's being run off onto neighboring properties, but that's changed. And that's why you have to have these large sites now, and you have to have this primary backup site. So we could certainly incorporate that language within the cut, within the conservation development. I'm not opposed to it, but that's where that, I think, originates.
Well, the, that paragraph on sewage disposal. I'm just saying that, that statement that's in the comprehensive plan that speaks to. The presence of sanitary and water service is necessary for the construction of a conservation development. It's, it says that in our comprehensive plan, but our zoning resolution is silent on that. So there's like a disconnect.
Yeah, I think you're right about that, because I remember what Skyland. Again, you're, you're putting in. One-third acre lots through the houses that are grouped together. So you, you're not going to put septic in, so. But I see what you're saying. Should that be appropriate in our language or?
I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
You know, it, it's always stated, but it's really not, unless it's in our zoning resolution, it's debatable. You know.
No, I think it's a good idea.
So it's a, I mean, a simple sentence that.
Yeah. So we can, I mean, we can do, yeah, we'll, we'll just probably put it on page fifty-two. I'll work on some sample language. And then we can review it next time to water and sewer. Do you know what page on comprehensive plan? Perfect. So we're back to the list of topics. My, uh, my thinking was we would go ahead with automobile service station. We've already worked through most of that language, and so I think it should be a relatively easy one to bring back up to speed on.
I don't think, but wait. We already had agreed on everything for the automobile. It went to the trustee.
Correct. And if you remember, their discussion at that point was two, there was twofold. TireMax was pending. And so they didn't really want to make this change while this TireMax issue out was outstanding. And the second thing was, there was the comprehensive audit ongoing at that time. And there was some thoughts that the comprehensive audit would have some impact on this, and so they didn't proceed with that. But both of those things have now been pushed aside. And so I think it's a good time to revisit it, and we can again, start from that same text and look at whether we want to. Proceed with proposing that same text again or different texts. I remember Medina Planning Commission did not have negative things to say about that. Did they?
One person had, one person had very negative things to say. And, um, she got a whole lot of people on the, on that, um, committee to back off of it.
So we'll pull up the comments from the planning commission. We'll review those and we'll review our taxes.
Not all captured in the comments.
The comments are the official, so we'll pull it up and we'll see what was said, and we'll see if we want to make any adjustments, or if we want to advance it. As it is. So that'll be the new business for next, uh, next thing. I think that that will probably fulfill the meeting in its full entirety. A couple of other small items. First day school supply, uh, if you remember last year, we granted them. We did a preliminary site plan for them for their new warehouse. We, uh. Be okay, the plan, provided that they had a deed restriction for shared parking. That deed restriction has been reviewed by. The prosecutor's office now and approved. And so I'm not sure, Tom, you haven't seen the official re- recordation of the deed. For first day school supply. You have not seen the official recording of the, the deed. So that will be recorded, and then, uh, Tom can sign off on the building permits for that, that plan. We waived the final site plan because it would have been the same as the preliminary site plan. Uh, so nothing else to report on first day. Uh, just a reminder that the Northeast Ohio Planning and Zoning Workshop is on six thirty. It's a half a day if anyone wants to attend. If you do, please, uh, let. I think it was Suzanne.
Where is that at?
Kent, it's at Kent State. Hotel. Yeah.
Actually, I think it was a trustee Augustine requested to let her know, so you can let Suzanne know.
Suzanne request. Believe. Okay, she sent the email.
She, Melissa also sent one to us, the, the chairs directly to, to make sure. Uh, because they just have to get funding approval, I think, for it. So she wants to, the trustees have to know before the sixth. So that they can put it on there.
It's a half day. I'm sorry, was that morning half day?
Half morning half day.
Okay.
Morning half day on the thirtieth.
Okay.
Uh, the last order of businesses, I think you all saw the email regarding the town center project. And again, just the encouragement to consider architectural review standards. I've mentioned it at the January meeting. I mentioned it again at the April meeting. Um, I haven't seen a lot of interest from this committee. I do quite frankly, think it's going to be probably too late for this project, but certainly willing to. I still am in favor of considering architectural standards, if we want to add that to this, uh, to this list of items.
In January, I, I suggest we put it on hold and. Lo and behold, there's actually, um, somebody that's going to build something new in town center, which we have not had that experience. And so I think this is an opportunity to resurrect reviewing. Architecture and design standards. I don't think they have to be extremely detailed. But I think maybe it's an opportunity, uh, to take this individual who has expressed. From his emails, a desire to work with the township in developing. Whatever his theme or design is going to be to work together. Maybe it's something that we ought to consider actually moving forward on.
So I am not in favor of the proposal that we work with the developer on it. I'm okay if they were to provide us some language. Have discussions, just like any other member of the public. But I, I'm not in favor of working, having a developer come in and say, hey, you know, this code doesn't work for me, or I'd like to see this work. And then have a developer be present throughout this conversation.
I mean, it would be nice to hear what. The developer is contemplating. I'm not saying that, um, we're going to say, well, this is what you want to do, so that's how our, our code is going to be. But I think maybe it's appropriate that we consider putting in some language. Which gives some parameters and guidelines, whether it's for this individual or for any next endeavor. That does establish some boundaries. I mean, I'm not saying we have to go to the detail of, I want the specific architectural style, because that could take forever. Like that material I passed out.
I think architectural style is the big one. I mean, do you want a contemporary look here? Do you want, I think architectural style is the big one.
And I think it might be the only one that has real teeth. I don't know what sort of architectural standards that you would set that would have any level of teeth.
Why we can't get, we had Richard come and, and he reviewed everything regarding, uh, solar panels and they changes and stuff. Deeply involved, but I don't know that he necessarily influenced, he certainly didn't influence my vote. I appreciated some of the information. Can't believe we can't work with this guy at an arm's length. I don't know, but I, I would hope.
Can I, can I clarify also? Just to clarify, um, I, I don't know that I laid it out as clearly as maybe I should have. When I forwarded that email to you all, but that was the developed, that he has asked that we do not call him the developer. Sean Gaffney has requested, he wants this to be a collaboration. So he doesn't need to do that, but he wants this to be a community project where the entire community really feels involved. In this project. I suspect because we have never had anything like this before. That there's going to be a great deal of public interest in this project. So that's why I had suggested work sessions. You don't need, you don't need to work with him. He doesn't need to work with you. But if you are reviewing this again, it kind of gives you a sounding board. And that is what he's asking for, is the community feedback, and you guys are the zoning commission. You know, this is something that you guys are. Contemplating, do we want to, um, discuss this again and put this, you know, maybe put some things down on paper? So that was why I had sent that, so that you guys know what it is that he's asking, you know, he's saying. What are we looking for? For style? What are we looking for, for, um, for the facings of the building? Are we looking for siding? Are we looking for stone? The roof pitch, things like that. We don't have to tell him that. He doesn't have to come to us and ask, but in the sense of the community, that's what he's asking, and you guys as a board. So that is why I had suggested possibly a work session with you guys.
Would he be opposed to come into a meeting, a public meeting, like the regular zoning meeting?
No, he's.
Because if he's. Come, willing to come to the meeting, we can just schedule that as one of our topics and have their input. Um, but again, style is huge, what I think is huge. You know, we have a contemporary looking fire station, and yet downtown is Western Reserve. So, you know. It's a very, it's a consideration, I agree.
Right, I'm ready, vice number one to hear what. He's contemplating, yes, the same. And he's got a large area and he's thinking multiple buildings. So, you know, is uniformity, you know, in construction a concern? You know, that, is that a design standard when buildings are built, there's uniformity, the facing of them is similar? So that, and that even proceeds selecting, you know, which style.
I didn't see his renditions, I didn't see the drawings, but.
Did, did he provide any?
I don't know, I thought.
Trustee, he did not provide.
Something.
Spoke what he was envisioning, and he spoke of a nature theme, and I don't know what that means. And so, I mean.
We already got one.
But I don't think he meant that now. Maybe he wants the buildings to look, you know, stone and wood, I don't know what that means, you know.
I, when, when you talk like that, when he's, that's, I thought of Hudson, that's Hudson's.
And I believe the rendering that he had in that presentation, those were projects that his architect had done previously. So that's why they had those in the presentation, if I'm remembering that correctly. I don't know that that's what they were thinking for here, I think it was just something to have a vision, I'm a visual person, so I appreciate that.
I am too. But, so I would, I would have no problem with. Sean Gaffney coming to a zoning commission, just like any other person in the public. And speaking to us and asking us what we thought and what our opinions are, and I have no.
So.
I welcome that.
What I'm hearing from you is actually more like a concept plan. Are you talking about thoughts just related to architecture or what? Because we do have the concept plan process, right, which is more of a thought of the entire development as a whole.
Right. Well, he's.
From, basically what he said in the email was that he wanted. Our opinion based on, all right, this is how we're gonna get it. Just so we know how to develop it, what we want it to look like as a township.
Right.
And wanted all of our feedback on that.
I mean, imagine him coming to a meeting and Michelle saying, it'd be nice if you could. Have the influence of Western Reserve, he probably doesn't even know there right now.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Why I'm asking, are we doing a concept plan review, or are we now talking about architect? Are we doing this as a subject matter of architecture, or are we doing a concept plan review of that property? Because those are two very different topics to me, and I'm okay with either one. Uh, but I'm just trying to understand, are we discussing architecture, is that our topic? Or is our topic a concept plan review of this parcel?
Yes.
Yeah, what, I mean, why, why would it not be able to be both?
If it's a con, well, for one, there's a concept plan process, and I think that there are fees that are associated with the concept plan process. And that's different, if that's what we're doing, then it should go through the course of a concept plan, it should be a submitted concept plan. The fee should be paid, and they should get their time here in front of us as a concept plan. If we're talking about it more generally as we want to see our, you know, we're discussing architectural standards, let us know what you're thinking of architecture standards. Um, because we're working on this, and we're very interested in what, you know, the downtown stakeholders have to say about this. That's not a fee, that's just an open discussion that any citizen can bring to us, and we can have an open discussion. And that's why I'm asking, is this a concept plan where we want to have the, the renderings, we want to have.
Probably too early for a concept, I think, just like some of the other big projects we've had, where they come in front of the entire commission. And say, all right, these are. This, this is what we're thinking about doing with this, is, is it your understanding that it fits with what's in the book? Or is there stuff that we have to change? Um, one of the, one of the examples, it was the, um, transportation company. They didn't do a concept plan, they came in, they talked to us, hey, this is what we're thinking about putting on West One Thirtieth and Three O Three. It, does that fit within what's already in the book? And it was in front of the entire commission, and we all just sat there, we debated, and we talked about it and said, yeah, actually, this does fit. And then ultimately, they didn't even get to the concept plan because it didn't work out for them.
Yeah, remember, we're, we're dealing with somebody who lives there in Hinkley. Club fellow citizen.
Even if they didn't live in Hinkley, they own property in Hinkley, they deserve the respect.
Yeah, right, so I, I don't know why they can't come in here and just have a discussion on that.
Yeah.
But this is different than the site plan, yeah. You, you guys are just curious what's going on. Yeah, you might explain it that way, and, and hear what, what he has to say, I'm sure he's. Looks like he's played it pretty close to the best so far, he just wants to do something, I'm sure he has some kind of an idea.
Sure he does.
Well, it's crystallized at this point, but. And just after this session, I think if he came thirty minutes, our next meeting even.
Sure.
Reach out to him. Then if we wanted to have another, we could do another.
I mean, this is, because this is a public forum, so the public is invited to come to it and hear it. But I, I think if he wants to know, and, and Cindy, if this is a perfect opportunity then for us to hear architectural style. And to express architectural style, you know, what are we, what are we looking for downtown? The rest, the Western Reserve is what is prominent. I guess, in the buildings.
So I'm going to characterize this more of a discussion on the property, his vision for the property as opposed to the architectural.
Well, it's fine.
Standards, does that, is that sound consistent?
It's a, a good broad broach topic and can cover.
Perfect.
A lot.
Perfect. If there's nothing, I have nothing else, so, Miss Crew?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Marzullo.
I'm good.
Mr. Manley?
Nothing.
Missing, nothing. Mr. Spellman?
Uh, I think if a person holding property in this downtown area is willing to come in and discuss and want to work with us, partner with us.
Perfect. Perfect, Inspector Rosa.
I just ask everyone who's sitting here and has an attendance to please sign it.
I think we have signed the paper.
Not you.
Oh, people, thank you. Trustee? Perfect, if there's enough, oh, members of public, any comments?
Not about the developer?
Nope, it's open and formal.
Personally, Richard Pearl King wrote, personally, I think it's dangerous to invite any developer to a zoning meeting. But that's just a personal comment. Uh, and I just, just for clarification, the trustees postponed action on the service station definition. In two thousand twenty-one, and I think the comprehensive. Audit did not start until January of twenty-two.
But there was already discussion of it in twenty-twenty-one.
There was.
Can you elaborate on why you think it's a danger? Just out of curiosity, you don't have.
Uh, I would, I, I guess one little thing was they were suggesting they wanted to put. Housing or second floor housing or apartments that is currently against zoning in the downtown area.
Second floor, second.
Second floor.
It's, it's conditional. It's conditional.
First floors.
First floor.
For existing.
No. It's conditionally permitted use within.
And first floor is not allowed.
Correct, correct.
And when two, when three fifty Hinkley came here to work on the, uh. Zoning code for solar. We weren't representing anybody or selling anything, we were only trying to develop and. Develop further the code that was extremely rushed in six weeks into our. Into our resolution.
I think the similarity is you have an agenda, yes, agenda, I think we're big enough to be able to decide.
That's fine.
My, my general concern is I want to make sure that every. Resident or stakeholder in Hinkley has afforded the same opportunities. So Mr. Pearl brought forth a proposal, it went through our normal course of business. We evaluated it through our normal course of business, and we just made changes to the text accordingly. What I don't want to do is have a person come in here and say, okay, I want to change this in the book, and then I schedule. Um, work sessions to accommodate a much tighter schedule on them that we didn't afford to Mr. Pearl in three fifty Hinkley. Or to the rush works when they wanted the special event language put in because of the noise concerns with the Halloween. I want us to continue our normal course of business in the way it is, and that's why I was so concerned with how we're characterizing and what we're doing. Because I don't want to create some, some, you know, difference here that we haven't granted to anyone else that comes before us. Um, so that's always my concern, is just keep consistency, keep fairness, we shouldn't be challenged, so. If there's nothing else, I would like to, uh, can I get a, a motion to adjourn at nine? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marzullo, second by Crew, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meetings.